We can call the meeting to order. So if you're here for the zoning board of adjustment meeting, you are in the right place. My name is Jayman Carr and I'm currently acting as chair. With me to my right is vice-chair Josh Neely. We also have member Robert Shaw, J.P. Boucher, Steve Lionel, and I'm looking across the table at. And we also have two alternates with us this evening, Andrew Sylvia and Joseph Patry. So we have a full complement of board members with us tonight, so all the board members will be voting. So the alternates will not be voting, but they can fully participate in all of our conversations. So just a few overall ground rules. So the zoning board of adjustment is empowered to hear appeals under the zoning ordinance, to grant variances from the strict terms of the zoning ordinance under certain conditions, to grant special exceptions from the ordinance. That's a use that is permitted when certain criteria are met, and also to grant relief under what's called an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements. Tonight, we just have one application that is for a variance. Following that, we will be reconsidering a decision that was made last November regarding 36 Granite Street and acting on a motion for a rehearing. Just in terms of the order of the business, we will ask the applicants first to come and address the board for the variance. In this case, that's the only application. You'll have up to 15 minutes to address the board. You don't have to use that 15 minutes, but it is available to you if you wish. Following that, any persons with, you know, in support of the application may also speak up to five minutes each. And then anybody with any questions, concerns, or opposition also has five minutes each to speak. Following that, the applicant would be invited back up to the podium to provide a rebuttal if he or she wishes. And then finally, anyone, you know, again, with questions, concerns, or opposition, one person may come back representing those folks and address the board again for up to five minutes. After all the testimonies received, the public hearing portion is closed, and it comes back to the board for deliberation and potentially a vote. That could be, does take three votes in favor to pass a variance application. That could happen tonight. It could, another outcome could be, of course, a denial or a continuance to another meeting if we feel that additional information is needed. I did neglect to mention that also with me on my left is Deputy Planning Manager Carter Falk, and also in the audience, Planning Manager Sam Durfee. Sorry for the oversight. So with that, unless I missed something that I should be covering?
Official roll call.
Ah, official roll call, thank you. So I will start off, well, I'll start off directly to my right. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
Mr. Patry.
Present.
Thank you for reminding me. Sure. All right, so I'm going to read the first case, and the only case, into the record. An application of Savannah Newhart and Robert Salerno, the owners, Robert Salerno applicant at 87 East Greenwood, uh, East Glenwood Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the left side yard setback to construct a two-story 24-by-26 garage addition. That's in the RA zone in Ward 7. So I'd invite the applicants, if you're here, to come up to the mic and address the board.
Good evening. My, uh, my name's Robert Salerno. I am the resident of 87 East Glenwood Street, and thank you for taking the time. I'm kindly requesting, as the chairman mentioned, a four-foot variance off of the property setback for, in addition to my home, which will consist of a level-one garage with a bedroom above it. Basically, this is to accommodate our growing family. Unfortunately, we're already quickly outgrowing the floor plan in the house with my second on the way due in May. And basically, we actually, when we bought the home in 2019, the family who we were purchasing it from actually ran into the same issue, and they chose to simply move relocate instead of going through this process. But however, we love our, uh, the location in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is fantastic. The elementary school, I could basically throw a baseball and hit the elementary school from where my daughter, and hopefully my son will be able to go to school there. We love our neighbors. I already spoke with all of the neighbors in person. That would be most affecting, and very personally, the abutting neighbor that this would be congruent with. And they had no objections. They said, you know, they've been there since 1980 in their home, and they said, "We went through the same thing with our property." And, I'm sorry for being long-winded, but that's basically my case for what I'm looking for kindly. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Sorry.
So, thank you for coming in tonight. So your, your house, where you're, we're looking to put the garage and the second-floor bedroom, well, basically puts you about six feet from the edge of your property line. If you look at your neighbor to, if you look at the front of your house to the left, that house shades towards your house as well.
Yes.
Do you know what the distance is going to be total between their house and your house after this is complete?
Um, I do not, but I could probably, I could contact my contractor and get a better idea.
If you had to guess, so, so you're going to have about six feet left, what would you guess from your property line to their house? Another six, 10?
Yeah, I would say probably another six, seven feet. Yeah.
13 feet, okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right. And was any thought put into maybe just doing a one-car garage in a smaller bedroom, or why, why the two-car garage?
Um, well, quite honestly, for logistics purposes, I think, you know, while we're doing this big investment to kind of, you know, go through the process and, you know, see how we can go about this, and, you know, from an investment perspective, you know, if we're going all out, see if we can get the two-car garage that, you know, can deal with the logistics a little bit better. And then for the purpose of, you know, kind of, as we're going through this process, you know, I think that the two-car garage versus the one just overall is better for my property in my investment. So, yeah, basically, that, and, you know, the extra four feet with the bedroom as well, certainly that could always be used for better storage or whatever it may be. And basically, and that's really kind of the, one of the bigger issues in the home is the storage, that's kind of what comes along with the children, is just, there's more stuff that just adds up and adds up and adds up. So quite honestly, if I can take six inches where I can get it, I'm, I'm going to try my best.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you take a look at the plans and say, "We couldn't do this for, extra four feet"? Could you do it, did you look and say, like, "Hey, maybe this would work without the extra four feet"? Or did you just say, like, "We need that four feet"? Why, why is it, why are you going for the extra four feet?
Um, the extra four feet is pretty pivotal to, um, you know, I just, basically, the way that the driveway is constructed, that extra four feet, because basically, essentially, what's going to happen with, and this is a proposed write-up of, of the details that will go into the architecture of the design, but a good portion is actually going to be taken up from, so that's actually, it's not our front door, but that would be like almost a mudroom entryway that would go in between the house, the existing foundation, and the garage. So that would actually take up a good amount of space of the, the, like, the horizon, basically, if you will. So that extra four feet would actually, it, it doesn't sound like that much, but it actually would go a long way for us. And basically, the contractor just said, you know, "We would really be advantageous to get this extra four feet if you, if you could."
Okay, so it'd be difficult to have this expansion without that four feet, is what you're saying?
Relatively, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just thank you for taking the time. I know it's not the busiest night, but I'm just trying to, like I said, with the baby due in May, all of a sudden, it kind of just hit, hit our family that we need to do something about this. So I appreciate the time, and thank you for coming to, in hearing my, my request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can be seated.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations. Thoughts? Mr. Shaw.
I'm in favor of it. I mean, I look at multiple things here. One is the, the size of the frontage of the house is, or the width, or the total width with the proposal is actually something that would just fit, I think, in the building box that's available for, and for one of the fact that, you know, if the, if the foundation was shifted over, probably four feet would still be meeting the right side yard setback, this would work. And I also, just, you know, I think it's pretty clear, it appears, you know, obviously already, there's the immediate abutting property, but quite a few homes, just, you know, looking up and down this street and this neighborhood have, it looks to be some encroachment into those 10-foot side yard setbacks. I think most of these lots are relatively narrow. I also think a 24-foot wide garage is a very standard and normal value. Much smaller than that, you start getting into more of a one-and-a-half-car garage type of situation. And especially then, you know, the applicant's notation about the mudroom entry, it would be very hard to accommodate any sort of, kind of a human entry door if, if this was to lose that four feet. So I think for all those reasons, I'm in support.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Sylvia.
Looking at the plans, like, the foundation was slightly askew from the setback. So if we, if the applicant stayed with the setback lines, they would have to make a shape that wasn't exactly square, which might be an undue hardship. I'm not sure if it is exactly square or not, but it looked like it. And they also mentioned, the applicant mentioned the hardship in terms of the mudroom, so I think that's another reason for granting the variance.
Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion?
Give me a moment to prepare here. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Savannah Newhart and Robert Salerno, owner, Robert Salerno applicant, 87 East Glenwood Street, sheet 129, lot 142, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the left-side yard setback to construct a two-story 24-foot by 26-foot garage addition. This is in the RA zone, Ward 7. The board believes, after hearing the testimony, that granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because it provides, it's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. It provides a reasonable-sized garage with a bedroom above it for the applicant's expanding family. The board believes that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it is consistent with the neighborhood and does not, it is, there is substantial justice to the applicant for creating this, and there does not seem to be any detriment to the neighbors. We have testimony from the applicant that the neighbors he has consulted do not object to this application. We have no evidence that the values surrounding pop, properties would be diminished, and generally adding a garage, especially an attached garage to a house increases property values. And unnecessary hardship, there are no special, the special conditions of the property are the placement of the foundation offset onto the lot, so that building a garage that would not require a set of the variance would be much less usable than what is being requested. So there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose and the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And the proposed use is reasonable because, again, it is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So of all that, I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor, raise your hand. Your variance request is granted. I didn't mention it earlier, but you, you can proceed with your project, but just note that there is a 30-day window of appeal, so during that time, somebody could file for, probably unlikely, given that there's no opposition here this evening, but just keep that in mind.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So now that takes us to the second item on our agenda, which is reconsideration for the variance that was previously granted for 36 Granite Street for RSA 677.
Previously denied.
I'm sorry?
Previously denied.
Correct, previously denied. We do have a memo that was provided to us from planning staff. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at that. There was also a pretty substantial amount of information, I, I think, in our packet, including the motion for rehearing that was filed, and the information from the prior case. So just kind of before we dive into it, does anybody have, first of all, just kind of any questions about the procedure and, you know, the nature of what we're doing or talking about? It's a little bit different than, I think, what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I think it's like first, truly first time.
Yeah, I've never encountered this before.
Agreed.
And so I, I don't know if you think, I think it might be helpful just to talk about what we're doing here, because it is such a different thing for us.
Yes. So essentially, this has been a case that has been before the board, I think, a couple of times. Initially, the board denied the variance request. I'm not going through all the data and all the history. There was a request for rehearing that was denied. It did go to housing court. It was remanded with instructions to the board. The board heard the case again. The variance request was denied. There was a request for a rehearing, and during the course of considering the request for the rehearing and looking back at the decision of the board and with conversations with staff, it was felt that a reconsideration, which is something that the board is empowered to do by statute, so in essence, the decision was stayed, and, and that that was an action taken at the last meeting. And so the board has an opportunity to revisit its decision, and it can, you know, clarify. It is a reconsideration, so the board could decide to take a different action, but it does also provide an opportunity for the board to clarify its prior decision if it wishes. So that's really what's before us, is reconsidering that decision, and whether or not there are any changes or amendments that we want to make. It is in the record that there are recommendations from staff, and there is in fact, you know, a recommended motion that is guidance for the board. The board is free to do what, you know, I think the board feels is, is, you know, right and just and in the best interest of the community, so, but that guidance is there for us to review. So I don't, that, that's helpful, or if anybody has kind of, any, any thoughts on the process or what we're doing, any questions as to what we're doing?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
My, my only other thing about that is, we're reconc, we're basically doing a reconsideration of our decision.
Yes.
Then will we still need to then go through the rehearing request itself? Because I think there's two separate things, aren't there?
Yes, that's, that's correct. I mentioned that was clear on the agenda, but that is correct. We do have the request for the rehearing, and we will also need to make a decision on that.
Okay. So we are reconsidering the denial, the second denial? Is that, that, that's my understanding?
Reconsidering the decision that we made in that case?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And I think, again, one of the thoughts was that perhaps we just hadn't necessarily put as much of the reasoning behind some of those, you know, the justifications for the points of law being met or not being met.
We, we thought we had, but we, we tried to, but apparently it was, we didn't do a good enough job on that, so.
There are definitely, I think, some areas, just in kind of looking back, looking back at the, you know, decision of the court, looking back at the decision that, that was reached, it certainly could be clearer. Mr. Neely.
I think it's important for us all to realize that we do, this, we're basically walking into this almost as if the testimony had just happened, and we're, we're re-deciding this case. So we're not automatically coming up here saying this is being denied. We do need to have a discussion of whether to approve or deny, and we have documentation from staff going both ways, but we should have a pretty good discussion here, which way we're going to go before we get too deep into this, into this, well, we should have a full conversation.
I would agree. And just kind of noting on that point, I, I think Mr. Neely is correct. We are taking new testimony. We are not reopening the public hearing, so that's a decision that would be based on the record. But you are correct, and I do think it's important that we make sure that not only are we clarifying the decision, but that we're comfortable in fact that that is the correct decision. And maybe that's really the place to start, is, you know, putting aside whether the findings of fact were sufficiently clear, is, you know, do we feel that the decision that was reached was the correct decision based on the criteria? Does anybody have any thoughts on that or want to speak to that?
I'll slurp. I do believe that the decision we made was correct, and I remember these cases very well. The, I don't believe that the application meets enough of the points of law to be granted a variance. There are, it's inconsistent, having two structures on, on a single lot is inconsistent with the neighborhood. The applicant had a reasonable and ordinance-compatible method for constructing additional housing on his lot that simply chose not to, to, to use. The effect of opening up the, the paper street to provide access to the back of the property would be disruptive to the neighborhood, and there were just so many reasons why this did not appear to me to be an appropriate application for, for granting. So I believe that our decision to deny was correct.
Mr. Neely.
When we first heard this case, you know, it really started out, in my opinion, it was the folks on Davis Court that were pushing back hard. As the, as it progressed, it was very interesting to me that we had a bunch of neighbors on Granite Street that came out against this as well. It became very apparent that the neighbors on Granite Street are a very, very proud neighborhood, by the way, and there is an interesting mixture of houses there, of single-family and multifamily. Any of them that are multifamily are, are one building. You can see, I'm looking at the, the map of this neighborhood right now. All of these lots, this is an older section of town, all of these lots are relatively large. They only have one principal residence on each lot. I do believe that putting another residence where, where the applicant had proposed is going to negatively affect the folks, looks like, looks like four, four properties to me would, would have all of a sudden a house abutting their rear yards, which are designed to be large rear yards. I don't have as much concern about the, the paper street on Davis becoming a real street. Once again, Davis Court being a fascinating old neighborhood, just beautiful houses in there. But I really think that when you look at this one neighborhood, and even as you expand and look across Concord Street, Norton Street, Orange Street, all these lots are designed to be larger lots, longer lots, with one principal structure. This one would be completely out of character. The only thing working in, in the applicant's favor, in my opinion, is I don't believe that that any property values would go down. The applicant had provided a letter from a, a licensed real estate agent saying that they had never seen property values go down. A bunch of the neighbors had, had testified that they thought the property values would go down, but there was no documentation on that. So I, so I would put that in the, in the applicant's favor, but quite frankly, I just think that one house kind of plopped down in the middle of that, of that set of yards there would really just be out of character. And as Mr. Lionel was speaking to, you know, we asked, "Why don't you just make the, the building larger? Why don't you have a driveway going down the side?" And the applicant just wasn't having it. It was a kind of a "my way or the highway" type, type thing, and that's kind of what I took from the, from this, this application. So I, I would not be in favor of this application.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Durfee for his memorandum. For anyone who's watching on video or the folks in the audience, the two people in the audience here, it's available on city website now, the memorandum. And looking at that, the first four points in there, I think, could have gone either way, but the fifth one, the hardship, I think, was definitely, would be against a rehearing. It was spoken very well by Mr., by the last two people who spoke here, that the applicant didn't make any, uh, didn't try to make any other method on what they were doing. There was no show of hardship on why they couldn't do it another way. So I think we should focus on that. And I also think the memorandum was excellent, so we should use the, the words verbatim there in our findings of fact if we need to. I, I, hopefully, we did a good job, but we could always do better, I guess, so maybe we could just use those words in our finding here.
Yeah, and we certainly could. Anybody else have any thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
I agree with, you know, with, with what's spoken to so far. For me, what came to be very clear was, is it really was two issues. It was the, the additional structure on one lot, and then there was the issue with the paper street. So I kind of was looking at that as two things. And like Mr. Neely said, that if that street, if that became a street for whatever reason and any other, generally, I don't know that I really have an issue with that. I think the point was, and I think we heard from the neighbor, that, that that is used to access to the rear yards to do some maintenance and that, that type of thing. So I have no issues with that as a reasonable use of that, that, that throughway of that paper street. Again, I think the biggest thing that stuck out, and I had asked the question also, I believe, somewhere there was, you know, why, why, why again, you know, I asked the answer, "Why not add on to the house or, or add on to that"? And again, it was very clear to me that, that, that they just didn't want that. They didn't want that look, they didn't want that. So it wasn't anything that was something with the land, something, there was something that prevented them from adding on to that structure. There was nothing structurally, or again, with the, with the design of the land, or some topographical issue, or some ledge, or something that they were running into, or some type of, you know, easement for sewer, or anything that would prevent that. So again, back to the sentiment of what's been already spoken to, is I didn't find anything compelling to the reason why they couldn't use, they couldn't do, they couldn't add, add on to the structure, so.
Mr. Patry.
Thank you. I would agree, and that we got the decision right in November. For me, the, the three prongs of public interest, spirit and intent of the ordinance, and substantial justice, I don't think those are met because this would be a pretty significant departure for this neighborhood. Adding a second structure just isn't something that's in the houses in this area. I do think that, yes, we have the testimony, the property values would increase if the second structure was added. I don't find that to be a dispositive fact. And finally, because the owner does have other options, I don't think that the hardship element is met. There's, this doesn't so significantly restrict the use of the property that other potential uses aren't available.
Mr. Shaw.
And I, I guess I concur pretty much with what's been said. I don't think I really have any new points to add. I just think that especially the hardship is not met, and I think there are other reasonable options available, I think, quite simply put, so.
So maybe just to tease that out a little, if I could, to me, the, probably the most significant issue is whether or not there is a special condition in the land, you know, or of the land. That, that's, that, for me at least, that's, that's what it turned on. And this is a larger lot than is typical, yet there are other large lots, including immediately adjacent to it is in fact a lot that's larger. It's a double frontage lot. There are other double frontage lots. There are other double frontage lots in that immediate block. If there were anything that would distinguish it, it's probably the largest double frontage lot. Is that a sufficient condition to distinguish it from other parcels in the area or not? I just kind of throw that out.
I don't, I don't think so, and, and, you know, really, the, to me, the major issue is, as Mr. Neely was suggesting, the applicant refused to consider what was the normal way of adding housing space to the primary structure, one that would be consistent with the neighborhood and consistent with the ordinances, and simply didn't want to do that. And that's not a good enough reason.
Because if there is no special condition, that we don't find that there's a special condition, then you can't meet either prong of the hardship. And so that's dispositive, even if one could argue that you met the other four. And I think that's arguable most, most certainly. So does anybody else have any thoughts on the decision? If not, we do have a memo that does have a suggested motion in it. I don't know if anybody wants to make that motion, or make a motion that's different from that, or any derivation of that memo, but I throw that open to see if there is a motion that anybody does wish to make. Mr. Neely.
Yeah, I'd recommend we stick with the motion as put together by counsel, and for those who may be watching this on YouTube, we did have counsel put together some verbiage for both affirming and denying this application. So I would recommend to the rest of the board that we go forward with a motion to affirm the November 12th, 2024 denial decision, unless we don't feel the board is going that way, but it certainly feels to me like everybody's leaning that way.
Is that the motion you're willing to make?
I would be happy to make that motion.
If you're willing to make that motion, wouldn't mind actually reading it into the record for our viewing audience.
Yes, yes, I would be happy to do so.
Although I realize there's a lot of verbiage.
I would be happy to do so. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to deny the original variance application for owner Sam Katz, address 36 Granite Street, Sheet 44, Lot 37, in the RB zone. The applicant had sought a variance from 190-17, dash, excuse me, subsection B, to allow two principal structures on a residential lot where only one is allowed. The board finds that a second principal structure represents a departure from the established neighborhood pattern of single structure lots with occasional detached accessory structures. No other lots in the immediate vicinity feature two principal structure, therefore, the proposal is demonstrably contrary to the public interest because it would alter the essential character of the locality. As explained in Malachi Glenn versus Town of Chichester, which is 155 New Hampshire, 105, and 106 from 2007, the board must ensure that a variance does not fundamentally change the nature of the community. The board also finds that the spirit and intent of the ordinance would not be observed if the variance was granted. The purpose of the residential district's ordinance, 190-17, is to, quote, "protect the character of existing neighborhoods through zoning regulation and enforcement," unquote. The subject property as currently developed conforms with a neighborhood's established pattern of single duplex or multifamily residences with only one principal structure per lot and occasional accessory detached buildings. Permitting a second principal structure would run counter to the ordinance's intent and disrupt the neighborhood's traditional form. The board also finds that while granting the variance might be seen as serving the applicant's interest, the board finds that it would not achieve substantial justice for the community. The proposed development, featuring two principal structures, is inconsistent with the surrounding development pattern. Moreover, the applicant has a code-compliant alternative available, which is constructing an addition to the existing structure to house an additional unit. This alternative would allow full utilization of the property without deviating from the neighborhood norms. As to property values, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished as demonstrated by the letter from a real estate agent, which stated that property values would not be negatively impacted. Given no expert testimony has been received of the contrary, the board finds that surrounding property values would not be negatively impacted by granting the variance. The board finds that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would not result in an unnecessary hardship as defined under RSA 674-33, subsection 1, subsection B, subsection 1, because, A, while the board acknowledges that dual access from Granite Street and Davis Court is unique to this property, this condition does not justify a second principal structure as the most reasonable solution for further development, especially when alternative code-compliant approaches are available that do not depend on the dual access. Further, the property's large size is not unique as two larger properties directly abut it. As a result, the board finds that the conditions of the property are insufficiently special to pose a hardship if the provisions of the ordinance are enforced literally. B, while the use of two units is reasonable, as evidenced by multiple examples of two or multi-unit households in the neighborhood, the proposed form of development with two principal structures is unreasonable since no lot in the immediate vicinity features more than one principal structure. Given this, C, a fair and substantial relationship does not exist between the ordinance provisions allowing a single principal structure on a lot and the application of that provision to the subject property, because upholding the provisions of the ordinance would indeed protect the character of the existing neighborhood, which is a stated public purpose in the residential district's ordinance, 190-17. If the applicant seeks to claim hardship under RSA 674-33, subsection I, subsection B, subsection II, the board finds that the criteria for hardship under this prong are not met because, A, the conditions of 36 Granite Street are insufficiently special to distinguish it from other properties in the area to justify a second principal structure, given the property's larger size is not uncommon for the area, and the second access point from Davis Court does not compel the applicant to build a second principal structure, especially when in addition to the existing structure to accommodate another unit is a viable option. The additional unit the applicant seeks to construct can be achieved via an addition to the existing structure, which would not necessitate variance relief. While the added residential density is a reasonable use of the property, the manner in which the applicant is seeking to establish a new unit via a second principal structure is not reasonable, as this represents a deviation from neighborhood norms. A second principal structure is not a reasonable addition to the property. So for those reasons, I do request a denial of the original variance application.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lionel. All those in favor of the, I should say, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you. So the motion to deny passes. So that said, we do have the request for the rehearing. We do typically go through each criterion and kind of go around and take everyone's temperature, and then look for a motion to either grant or not grant the rehearing request. Before I start off on the criteria, any overall thoughts anybody wants to share? If not, I will start on the opposite end then. So the first criterion is, was there a procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Mr. Patrick, thoughts?
No, I do not think there was a procedural error.
Mr. Sylvia.
No, I don't think of the procedural error.
Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Boucher.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Neely.
No.
And I also do not find that there was a procedural error, so no. Next, was it an illegal decision? Did the board fail to completely address all points of law required for a special exception, or obviously, in this case, a variance? Mr. Patrick.
I do not think the decision was illegal.
Mr. Sylvia.
Agreed, I don't think this decision was illegal.
Mr. Lionel.
I agree that it was not illegal.
Mr. Boucher.
I agree it's not illegal.
Mr. Shaw.
I do not think it was illegal, and I think the board addressed all the points of law.
Mr. Neely.
It was not illegal.
I also believe it was not an illegal decision. Does a request contain any information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Patrick.
No.
Mr. Sylvia.
No, I'm not aware of any additional information since that time.
Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Boucher.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Neely.
No.
And I would agree, I think, for the most part, the rehearing request simply disagreed with the findings of the board, the decision of the board, but did not offer any new information that was not available at that time. Is there anything new that could or would cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Patrick.
No.
Mr. Sylvia.
No.
Mr. Lionel.
No.
Mr. Boucher.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Neely.
No.
Any else who agree? No. So given that, does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Fox seems to want to have my comment.
Mr. Durfee's memo had some, the very last page, I think, there was some language on that. I think I regarded the motion.
You probably did, it's just very, it's probably buried in there. I'll find it if you want to.
It looks like Mr. Durfee is suggesting a motion, basically.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what's said, but I try to make sure that anything in his memo we should capture, or at least incorporate.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make a, make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
So I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for rehearing for applicant Sam Katz, address 36 Granite Street, Sheet 44, Lot 37, in zoning district RB. The board finds that there was no procedural error made over the course of the previous proceedings, following the suspension of the previous decision and reconsideration of the record, and having started, excuse me, stated findings based upon those provided above, the decision fully addresses all the applicable points of law. The rehearing request does not, excuse me, does, yes, does not introduce any new information that was not previously considered as part of the original public hearing. And finally, having previously reheard the application following the reversing and remanding order from the Housing Appeals Board, having suspended the previous decision, and having subsequently reconsidered the record, a rehearing would be warranted if the board decided to reverse its original denial decision. However, the board...
Decided to...
The board decided to affirm its original denial decision, a rehearing would not be warranted, and the request for which should be denied.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lionel. All in favor of the motion to deny the rehearing request? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Fox, thank you for catching that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so the rehearing request is denied, and that takes us to review of the upcoming agenda. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look up the agenda.
Got a question on that.
Yes.
The catchment basement for Salmon Brook is entirely within Nashwauk, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so that was my question about two of the applications there about Salmon Brook.
Any thoughts, anybody see anything that would be of regional impact?
No, I did not.
I would agree, I don't see any. So moving on to the minutes of the prior meeting, does anybody have any corrections, any errors that they found, any changes they'd like to make? Mr. Patrick.
Page two, the first full paragraph, it says, Mr. Parker said this won't be contrary to the popular interest, I think we want to say publicly.
Correct.
And...
And if I may jump in, that same error, that pops up on a few different pages.
Yep. And then I saw a typo. Page 13, the, under number five, the first full paragraph, the end of line, one, two, three, four, five, six, end of line six, Y should be shy. I think we want to say shy of allowing.
Yes.
Oh, and then page 15, the first full paragraph, the end of the third line, hair should be have.
Yes.
I think that is all.
Anybody else?
You're really good on that. I read through this whole thing, and, and, you know, normally I got kind of skimmed it. I said, no, I've got better read the whole thing, and I still didn't catch those.
I think I got Joe, right?
Yeah.
And so I could add, it's probably easiest to just do a global search, but the popular substituted for public shows up on page four, towards the bottom, et cetera. So a couple more, I think I found, this is incredibly minor, but on the top of page 12, a motion to prove the variance, there's an S, there was only one variance. Again, super minor, and popular again.
You looked at all the populars?
Yeah, I just looked for all the populars. And the three lots, so on the top of page 17, the three lots on Mulvanity, I think that's just a smushing of words, top of page 17. It's pretty minor, and I think that's it, that's all I have.
One more question. A few times where road was abbreviated to RD, there wasn't a period after that. Should there be a period in that situation? I believe that's the correct.
Technically, that's correct.
Okay.
So there you go. All right, any other corrections? Anybody want to make a motion to approve as amended?
Some moved.
Mr. Shaw, second? Second by Mr. Boucher. All of those in favor? All right, and last item we have is review of the bylaws. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the bylaws? Does anybody have any suggested changes or corrections?
So, so, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick, quick question. So executive sessions, have we had any executive sessions in the last couple of years? And what we, if not...
Mr. Fox, I struggled with that too, but I think it's what we're referring, or I think it's what we're calling our deliberations.
No.
We've had some before the meeting with Corporation Counsel, or another counsel has come in to talk to the board about certain law cases, but we generally don't really have those, but we could.
Well, that certainly cleared it up. You know, I haven't been here for any of the General Counsel pre-meetings, but, but that would make sense to me.
We used to have those annually on a, like, a training basis down in Room 208, but we haven't done that in quite a while, but yeah.
It is a confusing term, because it's a term that people often interchange with non-public sessions.
Sure.
I saw another reference into it here, though, that made me think, because it gave me pause at first. I'll have to look and see where I saw it again. The only thing that popped up at me was looking at page three, under H, a representative from the city planning staff shall give his/her staff report relating to use variance requests. It doesn't seem like something we typically do.
No. Staff usually writes a summary for use.
Right, yeah.
But right now, use variances and area variances are really at the same points of law, so.
Right. We also aren't having staff do a presentation.
Right, that we've never done.
I actually, I noticed that point too, and I thought maybe we should just add, upon request, you'll give a report.
I was thinking exactly the same thing.
Since that seems to be what, I mean, certainly, Mr. Fox, you know, whenever we've asked for advice, you've certainly given it.
Correct, right. The only time the staff usually gets up to the podium is if it's an appeal of an admin decision, local update, or in state, the city's stance on it. That's...
Hope I don't see you again real soon.
That's certainly the only time, but, you know, if, if the board wants, you know, like, like you said, you have questions, we'll always answer them, but...
So should we strike it, or should we make Mr. Patrick's suggestion that it's just a request? a request?
Let me do the suggestion.
Okay. And maybe just strike the word use and just say related to variance requests?
Sure. Can we say, instead of shall, say may?
There we go.
Yes.
Yeah.
May give his/her staff report relating to variance request, have the request to the Board?
May, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
In my, in my programming language, standards works, we distinguish between shall, which is an instruction, and may, which is permission.
May is, maybe you could, maybe you--
Yeah.
It's not mandatory. Shall is mandatory, shall.
Yes.
It's a must do.
And those are the only two choices we're allowed to use.
I had a couple things for section nine. One is just that the first sentence says, you know, Board shall vote on each application unless, you know, variance special, et cetera, et cetera, and then the vote shall be taken in a public meeting held after the public hearing. The only problem, in a way, I have is that we list requests for rehearing in that group of things, but that's not actually subject to a public meeting, to a public hearing. So we could just put the exception when we say that, you know, we could say, the vote shall be taken in a public meeting except for rehearing requests held after the public hearing, or just, but I realize it's, it's kind of a, it seems to indicate there would be a public hearing for all of those items when indeed there is not, other than--
All right. Maybe we just add another line for rehearing request.
Yeah, it might be simpler. And then, and then after the semicolon, I just, I'm actually having trouble with the language, and I'm just not even sure what we're trying to say there. Session may be conducted upon a majority vote of the Board, however, voting on the application must be made at a public meeting. I feel like we dropped some text or something in some update before and haven't, I just, I caught it upon reading it now, and I was like, I can't quite make sense of that phrase, what we're trying to--
I think it's supposed to be executive session.
Well, but it's still talking about--
Right, there'd be a semicolon.
But it's really alluding to just the fact of, you know, about, that there's a vote that'll be taken in a public meeting, and then, yeah, it's almost, what, what is being conducted upon a majority vote of the Board?
Take it all out.
I take that out.
Just take that sentence out, that part off. Everything after the semicolon comes out.
Yeah, okay.
I'd also add equitable waivers to that first line.
True.
I'm just going to throw in one general comment that I think I made to Sam earlier, was that I find the repeated use of his/her to be a bit interruptive, and we have a perfectly good word there in the language to use in that place, in that place, or himself/ herself would be themselves or themself.
I'm okay with that, mainly if we restructure the sentence to accept the plural.
Yeah, it just, I, it's, I don't think it's going to be, I wasn't going to suggest it as a, that we really, really should do this, but whenever I read, I read this, every time I come across that, I stop, and it just does not feel natural to me. I understand that there are people with firm opinions to the contrary, but that's the way I feel.
I'm one of those people. I don't like using their unless it's plural. I don't think their is senior. But we could also, if we want to go down a similar road, we might want to say chair rather than chairman.
Well, yeah, I wasn't going to go that, go there, but I would be fine with just leaving it the way it is, and with, these other suggestions were great. Sort of my personal bugaboo there.
So these are interesting times we live in? Maybe we should just let this one lie until we figure out which way the world is going here.
I don't disagree with you, but yeah, I think it's, it's bubbling now.
I don't feel like going there right now.
Actually, these bylaws really aren't read by too many people other than people in this room. I mean, they're filed in the city clerk's office and, you know what?
Every few years, we look at--
No one really reads them. I mean--
We read past them.
I know.
Do you have a sense of the comments on section nine about like how to massage that or deal with, we talked about cutting that out, that first sentence, starting with a semi-sentence, starting with session? And we talked about adding equitable waiver and then maybe getting, taking rehearing request out of that first sentence and adding just another sentence in that, since we don't deal with that in public hearing. Does that all make sense?
I like adding the equitable waiver, because the Board does do them, and rehearing requests are public hearings.
So it could just, there could just be a statement of the rehearing request is only done as a, as a public meeting, not, you know, maybe just leave it at that.
Where it says, the vote shall be taken in a public meeting held after the public hearing.
Yeah.
I think just a period right there.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Just get rid of that, get rid of that--
Yeah, get rid of the rest of that.
From that session to, just get rid of the rest of the sentence.
Yep.
I don't think it really, it's just confusing, I think. It's just too wordy. Yeah. So I would just recommend just getting rid of that.
Yeah.
I think that was--
Yeah. Where I'm going, I guess, is we have, if we have consensus around those, maybe we could prove them as amended. If not, we could certainly say we want to see a drop.
Do you want to see another draft next?
Yeah, and just by practice, we've always basically--
That's true, you're right.
Waited till a second meeting to do a final vote.
We can do another legislative draft--
Yeah.
For the next meeting, and then it can be voted on after that, you know, after that, after that one.
That sounds good. Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, I do agree, changing chairman to chair, and also possibly removing the slash with he, she, and say he or she might work in terms of breaking things up.
That works for me, it's easier to read, that's--
And also, we should keep in mind, even though it's not the case right now, there are people who identify as non-binary in terms of gender, so we should keep that in mind at some point, so. Also, in terms of section seven, it seems like, I was wondering if supplementary sessions would be better than executive sessions to avoid any confusion, since that seems like it's adding additional information for the Board? Would that be a possibility, would that not work?
Mr. Patry.
I think we want to keep it executive, because if we're getting advice from Council, we want that to be in a, in a private session.
Okay, so that's not off the record.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, for me, I think that's mostly when we'd be in executive session. I mean, you know, we obviously, we're not talking about personnel issues or, you know, this Board isn't doing something otherwise would need to be done public.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Mr. Neely.
Did we have anything in here about tabling? Or should we?
Continuing to a, yes, to a following meeting.
Down a rabbit hole here, so not just us tabling, we certainly had some applicants who jumped up and said, we'd like to table this right now.
That's a good point.
Because we, you know, we talked about withdrawing under section 10, it's, you know, it's got to be by 12 noon, six days prior, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, and we continue to hearing several times.
Tabling is done common, it's done often enough.
Done often, yeah.
I mean, it's, the Board certainly has a right to do that. It's always done to a date certain.
Yep.
If you're not done to a date certain, then it'll have to be re-advertised and start all over again. I mean, we've never had any issues by an applicant or people against any motion that's been tabled. It's, they're always done to a date certain, we get the information we need, and it'll come back up, the public hearing will be reopened for it, it'll be back on the table and deliberate upon.
So are you suggesting we just add a sentence under section nine that just says something about, about the option, because we say about any decision the Board must be, or is the reason, and it's about making decisions, so we could be explicit and say that, you know, decisions of the Board will take are either, you know, approval, denial, or tabling to a date certain?
Sort of 9A.
Yeah, something of that sort.
What about 10, where it says postponement?
I saw, yeah, I was looking at that.
I wonder if that almost means tabling?
Almost, except it seems to suggest that it's--
Or withdrawn.
It may be postponed or withdrawn after public notice by, only by written notice to the administrative officer, that seems like it's the applicant--
Hardly ever done.
Right. It might make sense to just stick it in vote and notice a decision and just note that the Board can table or continue an application. I mean, typically, that's to, you know, gain additional information.
Give the applicant an opportunity.
Right.
Get more, more information at the Board. Sometimes the Board asks for, you know, a drawing or a study or a--
Right.
--plan that we don't have.
Input from the department.
And sometimes they, correct, and sometimes they do, they say, hey, we'd like to table it, because I'd like my engineer or my architect to come, so it could be from the applicant or from--
Right.
--us up here.
Right, so it's--
We could put in some--
It's always about getting additional information.
Right. We could put in some language about tabling a case.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it'd be a good idea.
Just something in there. I think you could even put it in section eight at the end, maybe--
Oh.
Oh, I see.
Section B?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just make--
I would, I would make it O and drop O down to P, but somewhere in there.
Make it an O and drop O down to P.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both the Board and the applicant have the right to request a table, in which case we make a date positive, whatever. Couple words there.
That's, that is a good idea.
All right, we'll come in with another one next week, next meeting, and--
Mr. Durfee probably already has it typed up.
All right, and I keep going, but when we have fewer than four members, don't we give the applicant the opportunity?
No.
No?
No, no, no. By RSA, all we need is a quorum.
No, but by Nashwauk ordinance, we must proceed if we must proceed--
Okay.
Which is three.
I know other times you do that.
That was a very contentious thing, you know, some 15, 20 years ago.
It was.
It got kind of fine.
The Alderman got involved with that.
Oh, gee, sorry.
I believe that went along.
It was back when this Board was also struggling to oftentimes even have a quorum.
Right.
Or certainly meeting the five full members, so it was a constant unfortunate--
Right.
--ongoing situation that thankfully, we've been away from for a long time.
All right, we have a reading here. Anything else? Anything you want to stick into our attention? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Shaw, second? No second? Mr. Neely?
Too much fun.
Everybody else wanted to keep talking bylaws. See if they could find any more typos that Mr. Patry didn't find in the minutes. We'll have a contest going forward.
I do feel like there's a little competition.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.